I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee, Mr. Stevens.
Resources and school buildings, we postponed them.
Okay. And school building, right. Policy Committee, Mr. Horgan is not with us this evening. Student Support Subcommittee, Dr. Knight.
She's on now.
She's on?
She's coming on. Oh, okay. Say one more time so she can hear you.
Dr. Knight, Student Support Committee. You have anything to report?
I'm sorry, I just got on the line. Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, nothing to report.
Thank you. Personnel Subcommittee, I have, well, other than, we have a few new people here and we'll be doing a formal invitation, or, what's the word I'm looking for?
Introduction.
Introduction, thank you. Personnel, Executive Committee, nothing at this time. And we have not begun schools, so the student reps are not in attendance this evening. Approval of minutes from the previous school committee meetings of July 31st, 2023.
Motion approved.
Motion made.
Second.
Second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, as you may wish, thank you. Communications. No communications, public comment, anyone in the queue? No. Okay. Superintendents' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I have a few items for us. The first item is the introduction of our new interim Assistant Superintendent, Glenda. Glenda is coming to us from the Lynn Public Schools, where she was the Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And in previous years, Glenda has held several positions in Lynn and in Boston as principal of elementary schools, in addition to her first job and her passion, which is classroom teacher at the elementary level. So I'd like to introduce the committee and the public, Ms. Glenda Cologne. Glenda, welcome.
Thank you, very nice to meet everyone. I'm excited to be here.
Congratulations, good luck. Knock it out of the pack for us. I know you will. You come highly recommended. And as I mentioned earlier, you come from the crucible of some of the cities that are, can we say challenged, challenging? Yeah. And with challenges come opportunities.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Let's have a round of applause.
Very happy to have Glenda. It's like I've known her for years. She's hopped, she's, what, this is your second week, your second full week? She's hopped right into the position and she's been working with the directors on curriculum, rolling out the professional development that starts tomorrow throughout the district. She's, she's doing a great job, very glad to have her on my team, so, welcome.
Thank you, I'm excited to be here and to serve the students and families of Pittsburgh Public Schools. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Glenda? All right, the next item on my agenda this evening is the introduction, excuse me, to my entry plan. So some of you may yet know that I am participating in the new superintendent's induction program this year that is offered through the Superintendent's Association. So what that means is I meet monthly with a coach, in addition to have some sessions with a group of other superintendents throughout the district or throughout the Commonwealth who are new to the superintendent's position. So part of my role and part of my responsibilities as superintendent in the new superinduction program is to create a superintendent's entry plan. So I am finishing up my entry plan now, and tonight I'll be sharing with you kind of the why behind the entry plan and the timeline. This document is about 10 to 12 pages. My coach has it right now, and she's putting the final, her final eyes on it before I share it with the public, and she's actually on vacation this week. She couldn't have it ready for me tonight to share, but I wanted to actually introduce the key components of my entry plan tonight to the community and to the school committee. So that being said, I have some slides available for everyone. So the why, why am I doing this entry plan? So this is kind of my first step as role of interim superintendent to get to know the district. To get to know the district in a different lens, I have been here for 13 years, but not as the superintendent of schools. So my mission in the next several months is to get a clear understanding of what the district is doing around teaching and learning, meeting all our students' needs, to develop a deeper understanding of all our policies and procedures in the school district and the structure of the district, and really to go out and develop relationships with all the different stakeholders, including our parents, our students, and different community members. Like I said before, this is the opportunity for myself to be seen in a different lens as interim superintendent, and really get, for me, an opportunity for me to see the district in a different lens as I go out there and do this work. So that's kind of the why behind the entry plan. And then, part of the entry plan is to actually showcase what my values are as an educator. So up here on the right, there's a visual that has, as you know, our district values, but on the left, these are my values as an educator, and really what I believe in as educator and what I hold true. The first one is all means all, all students, every day, no exceptions. My goal is to be really student-centered, student-focused. All the decisions I'll make will be the best, on the best interests of our students, and we'll provide equal access to every member, every student of this community, no matter their background, their abilities, or socioeconomic status. That's my first value, and that's my main value, that I really hold true to me. Being an educator myself and a classroom teacher, students will always come first, no matter what position I'm in. The next one is collaboration and shared responsibility. Education is not easy, and we have to work together. We have to work together as a team. We have to work together involving all different stakeholders, our teachers, our staff, our students, and parents, and the wider community. My third value is relationships matter. Relationships are so important. It's the most important aspect of leadership, and it's one of the most important aspects of education. Relationships matter. The fourth value is respect. When I think of respect, I think in terms of how students are treated by educators and how they are expected to treat others. And then last but not least, family partnerships. We cannot do this work alone. We have to be respective, respecting and welcoming of all our families and our school community to support student achievement at every level. So that's just about, a little bit about my values and what I hold true as an educator. And as you can see, our values on the right for our district, adaptable, collaborative, trustworthy, growth-focused, and vulnerable, values align to my five values as an educator. So, my entry plan, what does this mean? So beginning in July until November of this year, I'm going to be going on something called kind of a listening tour. I'm going to be out there, meeting with parents, meeting with family members, our community members, meeting with elective officials, meeting with students, just to really hear exactly their thoughts on Pittsburgh Public Schools. I'll be doing that in individual conversations, group conversations, school visits, classroom visits. So you'll really see me out in the community, which I've done some of this already, but you'll really see me in the next few months out there getting to know our school community. On the right are all the different groups that I've targeted for our students, parents, and community members, our district staff and faculty, and our district leadership. So that's what I'll be doing now until July to November, going out there, meeting the public and listening, just listening to what they have to say about our community. And then the other piece that I'll do is I'll be kind of doing a deep dive into all our documents. I'll be going back and looking at our policies, which you all know, we're in the process of updating our policy manual with the help of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They're helping us do that work. In addition, I'll be looking at all our strategic plans, looking at our schools' plans, also looking at all our assessment data, whether it's state-level data or internal assessment data. So that's my role now from July to November. After that, in December and January of this year, I'll take all that information and kind of go back and look at that information and look at those trends, look at the information that I found in those interviews that I conducted in small group meetings, and kind of look at those patterns and trends. And then what I'll do in around January, the first of the year, is I'll come back to this committee and update you on those patterns and trends that I found, okay? And then last but not least, the next step from February 24 to August 2024, I'll be working with my admin team at the cabinet level and the school level to really go back and review our district's strategic plan, our school improvement plans, to make sure that we are really focusing on what information I provided to the committee and to the public on really what needs to be done in our planning. And we'll develop a plan to move forward. So that's kind of the three-stage, or the three-step plan of my entry plan. And then, just going back to our promise, all means all, every student, every day, no exceptions. Our theory of action, otherwise known as our promise, serves as our North Star. We are confident we will fulfill our promise. So that's my entry plan. Again, like I said, you'll be getting the 10 to 12-page document in the next few weeks to review with a little bit more detailed information, but I wanted to go over the why of the entry plan in addition to the three steps that I'll be implementing this school year.
Questions?
Thank you for sharing, John, I appreciate it.
If I could, our strategic plan, everybody should have a copy of that. And if there's anything that you are concerned about or anything, if you let me know, anything you want to see that Mr. Thompson to jerrwinn on, I meet with Mr. Thompson on a regular basis, and we discuss the plan, so.
Yes, so just one of the things that Mary Alexandra will be doing in the next week or so is she'll be reading, reaching out to each and every one of you individually to set up a time to meet with me to talk about your thoughts, and I have some questions to ask you regarding the, regarding Pittsburgh and the entry plan. So I'll be doing that and setting up time to meet with you over the next several weeks, okay?
Okay.
Any questions? Yes?
Your appointment is as interim principal, is it not?
Interim superintendent, yes.
Superintendent, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So there will be a search for a full-time principal, superintendent, or how does that work? And whatever it is, whether there is a search that would be set up later for a full-time, including you, I applaud your going forward with the plan and not being held back by uncertainty, or it really is a strong point that you're presenting here, like, you got a job to do, and I'm going to do, I'm going to do it, I'm not going to be held in a vacuum of uncertainty. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Rosemary. And, you know, to be honest, I want to be superintendent of Pittsburgh Public Schools, that's my goal, whether, you know, the committee, whatever the committee's decision is, whether I'm appointed, whether there's a search, whatever that is, I'm here for the long run. So whether in this role as superintendent or in my previous role as Assistant Superintendent.
I think this shows a lot of your interior attitudes and development yourself, and, yes, fine, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Next, I'd like to invite our HR Director, Carrie Fabbali, up to the podium to talk a little bit about where we are to date with our hiring for the 23-24th school year. Carrie?
Hi, good evening. Excited to be here. Today, we met with about, I think we had 72 teachers at the new teacher orientation, so that went very well. We are plugging along, I think we have some pictures. John was gonna, were you gonna?
I actually don't have them on my, it's on my phone, and I can't get onto Facebook.
Okay. There are some great photos on Facebook right now about what we did, new teacher orientation, getting them laptops, talking about what's expected of them, what they can expect of us. I would say that they were an excited group, they were very happy to be here. The principals were excited to greet all their new hires. I was just working, I have a couple more new hires coming onboard, we're still in the hiring process. I did share current teaching vacancies, we still have 26 vacancies, but at this time of year, in the climate that we're in, I feel good that it's only 26. And a lot of them are special education, unfortunately, that is very normal. Did you want to put it up, John, or did you want to pass it out?
Oh, I am, I apologize, Carrie. One second.
But we're in a really good spot. I mean, can, all things considered, how we've come out of the pandemic and how there's been so many shortages, to only have 26 vacancies right now that are posted? Question?
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this going to impact our ability to provide services? I know it's going to have an impact, but I'm talking about when the state comes in for you, you know what I mean? What's?
It will, but we are still hiring. So just because these are vacant right now doesn't, I mean, they're still posted and people are searching. I was just emailing one of the principals saying, yes, they hired someone today while we were at the meetings, and so I'm processing people as we speak. So this will dwindle down. The green are the classroom teachers. So actual classrooms that don't have teachers right now, and then the purple, unfortunately, are special education services. School psychologists, speech and language pathologists, those have been up for a long time. Those are really hard to fill in any district. And then we have a few interventionists and a math coach that are still lingering, but I'm getting emails as we speak. I feel like this is way too close to me. But we will get there.
What about PERS?
PERS, we still have about, I think about 20 vacancies, so we are actively filling those as well. Those are really hard to fill right now.
Yes. You paying enough?
Yes, we are.
We're comparable to other districts?
We are comparable to other districts. The issue right now is finding people who have either 48 credits or have taken the para pro, and they, and those candidates start out at $20 an hour. So, so as soon as I get a lot of these, we will start revamping and pushing out and advertising more for PERS again.
I guess, again, I'm just gonna, I know there's nothing we can do about it right now, but I'm, you know, thinking about, you know, classroom expectation going forward and the time it could take to hire someone in that classroom. Is there a plan in place to kind of address this in the interim until we can get someone in there?
The principals do have building substitutes, and they have plans in place to probably have some backup and teachers split classes. But it's a case-by-case basis at each school, what works for their, their positions.
Well, if I may, sorry, Carrie.
Absolutely.
We're looking at, we have instructional coaches in our buildings too, Tom, so we're asking them to fill in until we can hire somebody for those positions. So rest assured, we will be opening our doors next Tuesday, the 5th, and there will be a, there will be a teacher in the classroom for every student. It may not be the one that will be there all year, but it will be a qualified, qualified teacher to fulfill that role until we can find someone permanently.
Thank you, that's, that's really good to know.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Because, you know, I like the team approach, like, you know, wherever we need to pull, qualify, if we are administration or wherever, you know, let's do this so we don't have to put out a fire, if the state comes out, they're not going to care about, oh, you don't have, you need 28 spots, well, you know, oh, well, when they're doing their review, you know, we don't want to fall in.
You know, I want to, I got a comment on this. This past week, I actually had a conversation with a coach, a science coach that we just hired in the district, and he, he looked at one of these science openings and said, hey, I'm going to volunteer to go into that position until you find someone, because how can I go into this coaching role as a science teacher when I know that there's going to be 100 students that don't have a certified science teacher? So our staff is dedicated, and they're, and they're ready to step up to support kids. So I'm very impressed with the dedication our faculty do have to our students.
And our principals are not resting tonight. They are watching me right now, thinking, get back to work, get back home, and get on, and start hiring them, because they're having interviews, they're, they're talking to people, and they're getting, they're getting people as we speak.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your hard work, yourself and Mr. Thompson and your staff to try to address this issue. And I, it's important that the public knows that it's not going, it's not an issue that just say, whoa, whoa, you know, we can't do anything, you know what I mean? It's very, very important that, especially when you're dealing with students with disabilities and things like that, and we don't want the negative perception to get out that, oh, that's, they're not doing anything, they're just, kids are just sitting there.
No.
You guys are working hard to try and do the best you can to get qualified.
Principals and directors are working right now, getting more people. In fact, it's funny, I was sitting, I looked at this more closely, and one of the positions I actually closed bef, right after I printed this, and I was like, oh, I could take that one off. So we're actually down to 25, because they're, they're coming that quickly.
Good, good. Thank you so much for your honor, I appreciate it.
You know, the district has, it's been all hands on deck, and the principals did a phenomenal job spending their summer hiring people this year. They really did. I think they really stepped up.
Just to clarify, having 25 vacancies, that's not unusual across the Commonwealth.
Unfortunately, no.
And special ed is the same issue in most districts as well also?
I started out 23 years ago as a special education teacher, and that has never changed, no matter what coast I live on, unfortunately. That is just, it's hard.
Yeah, I think we should add and just recognize that right now, across the nation, there is actually a teacher shortage, so it is an educational concern, not just a citywide concern, so that is, you know, something that's really important for us to just recognize that, like Carrie said, 26 is not ideal, but it is certainly not in a situation where we are in the worst place. There are definitely districts that are struggling much more than we are. But this is like a systemic issue that, you know, I think goes far beyond Pittsburgh Public Schools.
Do we, do our schools have their complement of permanent subs?
They've been hiring permanent subs.
And what's our sub pool look like?
Our sub pool, I have to look at that, I haven't looked at it lately, but most of the people come back every year. And I'm, actually, we need to go into how much they're getting paid. So we upped it last year to 110 a day, so hopefully, I'm out there, we're out there, it's 110 a day to come sub. And that's actually for paraprofessionals, and we have a posting for clerical subs, because when people go out sick, we need to have people, we need a pool of people, so, welcome to Pittsburgh, it's a great place to work.
It is, and we're not just comparable, a lot of school districts look to us that they want to be like us for pay.
Exactly.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Yeah, if I could add to what Carrie is saying, when we opened the paraprofessional contract last year, we did find that we were one of the highest-paying contracts for paraprofessionals in the, in the area. And again, we've increased the sub rate. I know we've talked about how many, many college-age students are not pursuing education, so despite that, you know, I think, to Carrie's point, HR team and the, and the, and the school-building administrative teams have been working tirelessly all summer. I've seen her running around literally every day for the entire summer, and her team working on this, so, you know, I think we want to be in the best place, which is zero openings, but we're definitely, I think, moving in a positive direction. I know we have conversations about next year and beyond too, obviously.
And, you know, unfortunately, if you look at our openings, they are all the hard-fill, hard-to-fill positions that everyone is experiencing, the math teachers, the science teachers, ESL teachers, clinical support, in addition to special education, those are all, everyone's having the same problem finding, finding those educators.
The ray of hope today, though, I will say, is I asked our new teachers who was under, working under an emergency license, and I said that I would work with them to get them fully licensed, and there was like a little bit of relief for them. They're like, oh, okay. So we need, we need to actually cultivate that.
Right.
Because I don't know how long the emergency license will last, and they need to, we need to build those pathways to get them fully licensed.
So this will be my last plug to the public, whoever's out there watching, we are looking for substitutes, so if you do.
$110 a day.
$110 a day. There'll be postings out shortly.
They're up there.
Well, I'm going to be blasting those out to the public. Please go on our website if you have time, if you are a parent who's home with their child and they are in school, this could be a perfect position for you, so please check it out.
You don't have to commit to five days a week, we'll take two or three, even one.
We need, we need to let these people know that Pittsburgh is a good city, it's a good place to live, a good place to work, and it's got a bright future, and we're moving ahead.
Definitely.
I think Dr. Knight has a question.
Oh, Dr. Knight.
Oh, thank you so much, I mean, I thought you were going to forget about me for a moment. Carrie, I have two questions that I want to forget. The first one is, on Thursday, this coming Thursday, what time would the parents, not the parents, would the teachers' orientation start in the morning on this Thursday? Teachers' orientation, would you be having it this Thursday morning, and if so, what time?
Dr. Knight, teacher orientation was actually this morning, or today, from 8:30 to 3 o'clock.
Only one day, nothing on Thursday? What's happening on Thursday?
So today, so today was teacher orientation, the rest of the week, Tuesday through Friday, is professional development, that's happening throughout the district, and those times are from 8:30 to 2:50.
Is it going to be at individual schools? This brought up another question, or is all going to be at Pittsburgh High School?
Yeah, so tomorrow and Friday.
Thursday, Thursday.
Sorry, Tuesday and Friday this week are individual schools, and then on Wednesday and Thursday this week, there'll be different professional development sessions happening throughout the city, but mostly the two buildings we are using is Pittsburgh High School and Memorial.
So you're saying that I can go to the high school on Thursday morning at 8:30 and I'll be able to see some of the new teachers?
Yes, you will, yep.
Thank you so much, that's, that was for the first question. The second question is for Ms. Carrie also. Ms. Carrie, I know, I asked this question before, you weren't HR Director at the time, and I could never get an answer, you know, for the past two years, but let's try again. For, of the new teachers that you hired this year, teachers and maybe administrators can be put into the, into that category also, how many African-Americans so far? One, two, three? How many Asians so far? One, two, three? How many Hispanics so far? One, two, three? I need a number, if, you know, with all due respect, if that's okay.
Sure.
Yeah.
So that's part of the onboarding process, and I have, I have not gotten all of the responses for, we have to report that for EEO, so I'm happy to give you a report in about, probably two weeks, I'll have a good, I'll have a real report.
Thus far, up to today, how many African-American teachers? You have one, two, zero? It's okay, I mean, I know you.
I haven't looked at how they self-identify yet, and I haven't gotten all of the paperwork back from them yet.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck with everything.
Thank you, Carrie. The next item on the superintendent's report is a 23-24 calendar for our school committee meeting. meetings, but specifically our subcommittee meetings. I like to put a calendar together for our subcommittees throughout the school year. Previously, we didn't have a calendar for our subcommittee meetings, and it's really important moving forward that we meet consistent, consistently, at least once a month. So my proposal here, if you look, I'm proposing that the Student Support Subcommittee and the Policy Subcommittee meeting be held on the same night once a month, and then I'm also proposing that the Resource Subcommittee and the Building Needs Subcommittee be held on the same night once a month. Each meeting will be an hour, at least one hour in length, start times for the first meeting would be 5, and then ending at 6 o'clock, and the second meeting will start at 6 o'clock and end at 7 o'clock. Questions?
Go on, I didn't get that. My packet. Can you get this?
Mr. Thompson, I have a question. I know we approved this calendar a while ago, but I was looking at the school committee meeting that we have on September 11, and I was wondering if, if America helped me out, is, are there any celebrations that are going to be going on around that time, that will kind of conflict, because that's, that's 9/11, so I didn't know if there was anything that's going to be going on, events that might require your attention, or some, you know, others that would conflict with our scheduled September 11.
I don't know, Mr. Hughes, I don't, there usually is, the fire department usually does something, but that's early in the morning.
Yeah.
You know, I think these meetings, they're held in the afternoon, aren't they?
Yeah, 6 o'clock.
At night.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we do have a school committee, a regular school committee.
Right.
Scheduled for 6 o'clock.
Yeah, if there's, if there's something commemorating 9/11.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's very early in the day, you know.
So if there is something happening that evening, and there needs to be a change in the meeting date, or if we need to cancel it altogether, let me know, and we can, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay. So this will be one of the action items tonight to vote on, to move forward with the subcommittee calendar. All right.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, moving into the next portion is the budget portion of the meeting. Tonight, I'd like to invite Mr. Roach to talk a little bit about the Crocker Elementary School progress and all the other school projects. In your packet, you will see there is a two-page, or, yep, two-page, double-sided document outlining all the current projects we have going on. So, Mr. Roach, would you like to go over those?
I would, and I know Dr. Knight has her hand up, and I'm not sure if that's, if she has a question, or?
I think that was from last.
That was before, okay. Yeah, so I, I've, in the packet, and what is presented on the screen, and hopefully at home right now, is a little bit of a summary of the Crocker Elementary School project, and it continues to move along at an astounding pace, especially if you're not there every day. If you go once a week or twice a week, like I do, every day is, is impressive that you visit. The foundation is almost completely poured in the retaining wall, that will be located on the east side of the building, I believe it is, the direction sometimes confuse me, but the side, if you're facing it to the left, is large, it's very tall, it requires a crane, that is just about completed, and the first delivery of structural steel is scheduled for September 5th, that week, and they'll start to, as they describe it, be above ground in the construction that following week. So the pace and cha- and rate of change, at least visually, will really be dramatic starting in September, because for the past four months, it's really been site work and foundation work. But the, the progress, despite the rain this summer, has, has continued on at a rapid pace, and, and should continue to, to, you know, work towards that April substantial completion, April 2025 substantial completion and opening of the new school in September of 2025, with demolition of the existing school over the summer of '25. So, so it's exciting to, to see, and I'm not sure if anybody wants to jump in with questions, or have, has anything they would like to, to know about the Crocker Elementary project at this time. If not, I'll continue. So in addition to that, Long Joe has a number of projects in the works. The most obvious one now is a windows and doors project, so the entire facility is, is having all of the windows swapped out completely with custom see-through windows. One of the great moments of the end of the school year last year was when the administrative team was informing the seventh graders, who will be eighth graders, that there'll be all new windows, and a student asked if there'll be see-through windows, and yes, they are. That's actually an image of one of the see-through windows right there. So it's exciting to see that, all the, the 265 classroom windows have been completed. The construction company, Lazart Glass, is continuing on, and some of the common areas was, or areas such as like a custodial office or that type of thing. The work completion is scheduled for the end of September, they should have the, the front entrance stackable window tower complete before school starts, they're working on that right now. So it should be a minimal disruption, we have a, there's a plan for egress-ingress for those first few weeks, but the majority of the, of the major window work has been completed, and shades will be installed starting after school in mid-September, so it'll be all new, custom shades that, that will complement the see-through windows. The internet-based phone system, the schools have been, four of the schools have been completely cabled, the devices have been ordered, we should, should be able to start to switch over the schools from our analog system to the Internet VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol system, starting in September with completion, hopefully in the fall sometime for all of the schools. We'll start with Long Joe first, it has the most compelling need for a functional phone system, and then typically, the, the installers typically like to go at the largest schools down to the smallest, so that'd be Pittsburgh High through Goodrich. Crocker Field Project continues on, it was a long and very important meeting in the mayor's office and the north conference room on Fri- on Friday of last week. The project is close to being put out to bid, the target date for bid is the end of September, early October, to attract a contractor to install a new turf field, a new track, and all new lights at the Crocker Field Facility, starting literally maybe June 1st, the day after the Pittsburgh High graduation in 2024. So that's really exciting, and it's going to help escalate this, this renaissance of, of this part of downtown Pittsburgh, I think. HVAC upgrades, we have particular grant money from S.R. 2 and 3, that's elementary and secondary emergency relief funds that happened through, through COVID, in addition to an improving ventilation and air quality grant that we've earned. We do have cost estimates to replace the unit ventilators at Rhinegold, Memorial, and South Street, and we're working with Answer, our own project manager and our designer, BLW, on the cost estimate right now, but we're really excited about what that's going to do, and that work will be completed by the end of the summer in 2024, but we'll start to do some of it this year. The solar canopy at Pittsburgh High School, the likely, there's been a few things with, I think, some of the boards here in the city of Pittsburgh, just needing a little bit more information, planning board and so forth, but there's still set for installation at some point in the fall, and that would, that would produce 50% of the usable electricity, the current usable electricity at Pittsburgh High. Surveillance system upgrades has gone out to bid for a designer, we should expect some designer requests for qualifications at the end of this week, and that will be to upgrade the surveillance systems at all of the schools, all of our buildings, and that would include not only cameras, but door access controls and panic alarm buttons, and a number of other upgrades to make for a, a surveillance system that is highly modern and integrated with the Pittsburgh Police Department. In addition, we will start installation of new locks, interior locks at Long Joe and Goodrich Academy, that will then complete all of our secondary schools, the middle and high schools, with interior locks that include deadbolt action, that's very simple and quick to, to utilize. So that's funding that we will be using through our capital expenditures. We're working towards those building upgrades with our project manager to get designs for Long Joe Auditorium, the roof at South Street, front doors at Pittsburgh High, in certain locations, the main front doors, a walk-in freezer as well, the roof in brickery pointing at Goodrich, and then that new surveillance system. Again, that's all work that will, will begin this school year and, and, you know, through that next summer. Goodrich is having an overhaul of its, of its classrooms, all of the classrooms will be painted from top to bottom, and new floors. The construction company, the Veterans Construction Team, has done two of the classrooms so far, so that will continue through the school year over there, but it will really transform the interior at, at Goodrich. We will, I think, discuss at least a loan order that the city council did approve already. We expect to be invited into the MS, the Mass School Building Authority's accelerated repair program for new boilers at Long Joe Middle School to be installed next summer. The cost estimate, it's hard to believe, but is 2.052 million, with a 2.149 loan order approved by city council for contingencies and so forth. But that, I think, will really, with windows now that are not only see-through but airtight, really transform the in, the interior ambient temperature at Long Joe moving forward. You can see Mr. Stevens, I'm sure this one's near and dear to your heart, but new cafeteria curtains at Rhinegold.
Yes, I saw that. They needed to be replaced.
School colors along with those pads as well at the, in the newly resurfaced gym at, at Rhinegold, so it's pretty exciting to see that. We are looking at another project at Memorial for curtains this year, in addition to rigging and some other upgrades to that auditorium. And then lastly, though it's not the last thing, we do have some other projects that have happened, but we have taken into possession two new multi-function school buses, there's a picture of one there. The way these work is, as long as there are no more than 14 passengers, really anyone with a normal Class D license can operate the vehicles, so we expect to see quite a bit of usage for some of our athletic programs, but really, we're looking to use these as sort of a welcoming engagement tool, so when we have open houses, when we have parent conferences, when we have events, if we need to, if parents and guardians and other folks do need transportation, we want to be able to help provide that so that the doors are always open to our schools, so. They got the nice Pittsburgh Red Raider, or Pittsburgh Public Schools, I should say, logo on the side, and with Pittsburgh Public Schools as well emblazoned just below the windows. So quick updates there on a number of things that are happening, glad to take any questions.
Mr. Roach, thank you so much. This is a great, comprehensive report that you've given us, and it's, it really shows that one example of a healthy community is the things that we're doing with our schools. I couldn't be happier about Long Joe.
Agreed.
That is an iconic building.
Yep.
And the fact that we are committing resources to improving the condition of that building is just huge, and, but we're doing so much more, and I, I want to say thank you to you, and certainly the superintendent for your efforts.
I appreciate it. It's, it's, as you said, it's an investment in the kids through the facilities, so it's going to be an exciting year and, and next couple of years. Good. Yeah, I think there's a question over there, Mayor.
Yes.
Looking at what the, the solar canopy at Pittsburgh High School, I don't recall exactly, you say, should be nearly 50% electricity, electricity reduced, 50% of electricity consumption. I don't remember those, those very, that, that's a tremendous figure, I don't remember the gentleman that presented for his company such high figures, and also, I, I don't see, and I'm going to ask you if there is consideration for replacement, and they have a time limit, the, these solar panels, so what is the estimated cost in the long run?
Sure.
What, what have you to say about that?
Yeah, so Pittsburgh High uses about 1.5 to 1.7 million kilowatts per year. The estimated generation of solar with those solar canopies, which would be much like ones if you've ever been to Gardner Hospital, South Community High School in Worcester, there's a few areas I can think of, they're, they're basically cover the parking lots. They will produce approximately 45 to 50% of that current kilowatt usage that Unitil, you know, that's our electric company, has provided to us. Where we are working with Select Energy, and it was Byron Woodman that was here previously, the estimated savings to the city of Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Public Schools, because that's one cost that actually we do share, and, and not that we don't share costs overall, but specifically utilities, you know, will be in the 1 to 2 million range over the course of the 25-year term. It's a project funding agreement with, with solar companies like this, we have a, a system at Long Joe that went live that actually is expected to produce close to 100% at that school. The Crocker Project will have a installation that'll produce close to 60 to 65% of the current electric usage. So I can certainly find out more from, you know, our partners in Select, in terms of, you know, specific questions, replacement of defective panels, or if there is a lifespan concern.
A complete turnover at the end of certain, you know, you say 1 to 2 million so easily, that's a huge one.
You know, it is.
Between 1 to 2 million, I mean, that, that has to be more specific anticipation.
Yeah, well, I can certainly show you even our bills for electricity at Pittsburgh High, and you'll see 1 to 2 million would happen.
And the life expectancy of, of this particular set that we, we will be having is, what, how many years?
25.
20, 25 years, then it's going to have to be totally replaced.
Or we would re-sign through that particular solar pan, solar company, or another one.
Yeah, you see, there's, there's, some solar companies disappear, you know?
Yeah, of course.
Things come and go. I, I'm just, want to be updated on that, and thank you, but I have a question for the mayor at whenever I, it's free, not, not related to what was just presented, but I have a question, when you find time for me.
Want to ask that now?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm interested in the, I see you, you, we rely on S.R. 1 and S.R. 2 funds, and those are funds that came to the city via the COVID crisis.
Yeah.
I want to say that there's, initially, I asked for reports of, from the city, and I was told that the health department would, would give them to me, which they never did, but I would like to be much more on top of that subject rather than, I know we were hit with a blitz, but I, I think the city should have much more control, how many students, the students' names, what they received. When I, when I tried to pin that down, I was told, well, city didn't keep records, it all went off to Boston. That's far too obscure for, for us, for caring for our, our people. There's lots of, there's lots of subsequent damage done through these shots, I would like the reports of that damage control, I haven't had any reports on that, and it's very tempting to know that you can get money through, through these shots given to children, but I, I would like that to be brought into a much more knowledgeable, knowing what we're doing, not saying, well, we were told to just send the information to Boston, and, and the state is corroborating it or whatever. I think we have a responsibility here in the city to know what we're sending to Boston, to know the names, to know the, what the kind of shots that the kids got, and, and reports of any, any harm that's done.
Mr. Walsh?
I'm assuming, based on previous updates with, with S.R. funds, and I think total there were five different rounds of monies that we received.
Three.
Three.
Has nothing to do with the number of vaccination shots that were given to residents
in the city of Pittsburgh, nor to the students who go to our schools.
That's correct.
It had to be based on, I think, population and. It had to be based on, I think, population and, and a need. And the schools got, I'll just say COVID monies, the city got directly, got COVID money for funds that they could use that were not related to schools. And it has nothing to do with what, how many people got shots. And I believe there's a law, HIPAA law, that you can't reveal information, medical information, about people's medical treatments. Thank you.
Well, I, I don't think that that, apart from, we, we have a responsibility for our children, what we're doing. And this, certainly, if you don't name the specific individual that was harmed, there should be a, a, a report of damage done or harm, harm that was, followed the shots, how soon the harm came. And it just doesn't make sense that that has not been addressed at all.
That, you, we're going off the subject.
Yes, that's why I said to you when you...
And, and, but I will ensure, if you will send me specifically what you're looking for, I will make sure the health department provides you with the information you're requesting.
Okay, but in anticipation, they may say, we have no records of this.
Well, I don't know if that's, if that's true.
Yeah, yes, so.
Yeah.
Okay. But I, I think that we should, we should be on, on top of it.
Okay. Always good to be on top of it. Mr. Hughes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we, you know, given the number of things and challenges that we have, I, you know, I want to make sure the public knows how much I, as a member of this community for a number of years and have, you know, seen a number of administrations go by. But I want to make sure that, from my perspective, want to say thank you for the amount of investments that's been made in our children. It's been made, you know, under your administration, under current city council, and, and members of the school committee, making intentional investments into our kids, making sure that we do the very best we can do, making sure that the schools that they go to are safe, making sure the schools are quality. And I think that it, it shows in the amount, in this packet that Mr. Roach has presented. You know what I mean? In terms of the amount of projects that's going on. So I think that's exciting news for us, and it, it speaks volumes to our commitment to our future. You know, not, not, not for, it, there are benefits now, but there's investments for years to come, you know, in, in the, in our children that are, that are coming along in our district. And I just, I just want to publicly say thank you to everyone that has played a role over the years in making sure that we do all we can to make, to ensure that, you know, given the constraints that we have, some of the buildings are very old. You know what I mean? Some of the situations that you just can't, you know, knock a building down and build a new one. It just doesn't work like that. And, and the public needs to know that. Yeah, we'd like to, like to build five new schools, but it just doesn't work like that. You know, there's a process, and there's a tedious process, and there's other people involved. So, but the resources that we have and that we have control of, we're making, making sure that whatever we can invest in, you're doing that. And I want to say thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, move on.
All right.
Oh, no, no, no.
Sorry, Dr. Knight. Your hand went down and then it went back up. Go ahead, Dr. Knight.
I keep putting it up and down, hoping nobody can see. Thank you so much. And I don't want to forget, we were talking about the different improvement and, and construction that is being made in the district. And I wanted to say that every dime that is spent intelligently to rebuild or to remodel the schools in Fitchburg is very well-spent because our students deserve the best. Students learn best when they, they learn in pleasant environment and other factors also. So, so that is, that is a wonderful thing. I also want to say that the same way how it is important that when investment is made, it should be made intentionally, it is also, it, it should also be that when we hire educators and administrators, intention should be placed into their, into that for hiring administrators that are representative of the student body. With that said, and I am sorry that it took so long, I kept forgetting, I don't want to forget anymore. Please allow me to take this late moment to welcome Assistant Superintendent Ms. Colon to the Fitchburg Public School. Welcome, welcome and welcome. I believe I had another question that I wanted to ask, and, you know, I keep forgetting, but I'll come back again because I did want, I wanted to ask something else. What was it? Okay, but anyways, I, I'll leave it there as that. But thank you so much. We need to put some intention into hiring educators and administrators of color in the district to be a representation of the student body. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, I have another.
Yes.
I'd like to make a request of the superintendent to be open and let us know monies that are spent for consults. Who, who are you consulting with? You, you mentioned your program that, developing your program, and that was very good to say. But different programs that, that are being required of people, all of that kind of thing. I'd like that to be brought out as public information.
So am I, am I hearing this, can I ask a question? I'm sorry. Am I hearing that you would like to know what money we're currently spending on consultants in the district?
Yes, yes, and programs that you have in, that you run for superintendent, for you, for staff.
When you mean programs, can you give me an example?
Well, you, you said that you yourself are in one, the planned thing, you know? Things like that.
Okay.
Just so that we'll be open and we'll know what's going on, rather than finding out, you know, three years from now, that six years ago, there was a whole big presentation, whatever. I, I've, being open with that would be a big help.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and allow me to say something else. I remember a little bit of what I wanted to say. I, I wanted to say, Ms. Rosemary, I feel your pain. I know that, you know, you ask questions and you don't get the answers. And, you know, years pass by and, you know, one or two things may be addressed, but a lot of the questions that we ask, they never get answered. And I've been sitting on the school committee for almost two years now, and that is something that happens quite a bit to you, and it also happened to me. We ask questions, we, we would like to see things addressed. And, and, you know, I don't know. I, I guess, you know, because I was an international athlete, I tend to move a little bit faster than the normal. But, you know, some of the things that, that, that we do, we take a little bit too long to do so. I mean, we need to put some pep in the step, maybe get up early in the morning and do some walking, some exercise, so we can move a little bit faster and get the job done. Thank you.
All set to move on? All right, the next item on the agenda is the loan order for $2.14 million for the Long Joe Boiler Project. That will be up tonight for a vote. Item 23286.
Can I just clarify one thing to Mr. Thompson?
Go ahead, Jeremy.
So that has been approved by city council. It's a procedural step. We will, we will receive an 80% reimbursement rate from the Mass School Building Authority. So the city of Fitchburg's amount is approximately $400,000. And that, that's the highest likely cost estimate. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. And then, just so you know, Mr. Roach and I will be attending the MSBA Board Meeting this Wednesday, August 30th, at 10:00 regarding the Long Joe Boiler Project. So we'll be there at 10:00 AM on Wednesday. And that's actually a virtual meeting, so. And the last two pieces are donations. We have three donations for approval this evening. We have the first one from Fitchburg High School from the Bolak Brothers Landscaping. They did some work throughout the city. The second one is from the City United Church. They donated 155 backpacks for students and teachers supply in a total of $1,600. And the last is from Principal Mark Pierce at Long Joe. It's the Chevy Back-to-School sponsorship for $1,000. That money will be used to help meet the needs of the students at Long Joe. And then we have one grant for approval to apply, which is the Early College Support Grant, and the amount up to $75,000. This will support our early college program for our students around the initiative of early college at the high school. And that's all we have for this evening.
I'll make a, make a motion that we bundle 23285 through 23290.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to bundle 23-285 up through and including 23-290.
Make a motion.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to accept 23285.
Did Dr. Knight vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, Dr. Knight.
Make a motion to accept 23285 through 23290.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
We are unanimous. Moving on, executive session not at this time.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made. Seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.